Okay, as it is seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting to order and I would like to begin tonight with standing as you're able and facing the flag and saying the pledge of allegiance. This is something we've talked about and it's something that obviously we'd like to model the behavior for our younger people, so. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our mission statement for the old school district, mission of the old school district is to provide all learners in the bold community and education design to develop the creativity, character, and confidence necessary to flourish in a changing global society. So that's why we're here. Alright, we'll begin tonight with the approval of our agenda.
I'd like to make an amendment.
Okay.
On their personnel, number one, I would like to split it into an A, B, and C, if possible.
Okay, so what do you want these things to say?
Okay, um, the first one is whether or not to approve the reduction of, um, of the principals to just a K through twelve principal. B is keeping two principals, an elementary and a high school principal, and C, whether or not we need, want the dean of students.
So one A is approve a reduction of two principals to one K through twelve principal. Right?
Mm-hmm.
Correct?
And we can discuss all three and vote on it over, yeah, I don't know.
Well, we're gonna be doing one after the next, so if you approve number one, number one A,
Maybe it should be. Okay. Then we won't move on to the two principals.
You're not gonna have two principals, because you're reducing.
Alright, so one A would be keeping two principals, one B would be the reduction, and one C would be whether we wanted dean of students.
Okay, so one A is to approve two principals.
Keep, mm-hmm, keeping two principals. One B is re- the reduction of one for K through twelve, and one C is dean of students.
I think after the discussion,
Oh!
We could discuss this and then somebody's gonna make a motion. Whatever that motion is, if it gets a second, then we discuss that and vote. If that doesn't pass, then we can, another motion could be entertained. If it gets a second, then we discuss that and vote.
So maybe leave it the way it is and then discuss and then, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
So make, have a discussion and because then somebody could, you could.
So you can get.
Yeah, because if we, if we have a discussion and then like, like Jill was saying, if we vote to keep, to do two principals, well then there's no point in discussing, having a vote to have a dean or.
But you don't want the two of them on the same line. You don't wanna approve them both.
But it's just, it's actually gonna be a discussion at this point.
Well, you have action, you have action behind us, so they're not gonna have an action.
So I would change it. I would, I would change it so it's discussion slash action. We'd start with the discussion.
Okay, so we're gonna keep it as spread, approve a reduction of two principals to one K through twelve principal and one dean of students, discussion slash action. Is that agreeable?
You, uh, we could change it to approve an administrative model.
I like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So approve administrative model.
Mm-hmm.
Is one.
That just, that would be the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
With discussion and action.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'll work.
Okay.
Oh. I've got a question, I'd like to add something too, can we get some discussion on that school sign or is that gonna be in the facilities side? Cause I, we haven't gotten anything in here about where we are with the school sign.
Well, I can, there's, there's nothing to update, I can, I can say that very much.
During your facility.
Your report, alright, I just wanna make sure that we put that in there.
Alright, um, so Teresa, as your amendment, would you make the motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, and could you get a second for that?
One second.
Thank you. Motion is made by Jacobs, seconded by Bookdon, any other discussion or question? Hearing nothing, we will vote, on favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries. Recognition of visitors to the board meeting, thank you all for coming out tonight and hopefully we'll have good discussion and as we do the business of the district. Uh, moving on to public forum, our public forum is placed on the agenda for regular board meetings during this part of each regular school board meeting, up to ten minutes of time, will be allowed for district constituents to address the school board, each person or topic may have up to two minutes of time. This is a time of listening by the board. Um, so if anybody would like to speak, uh, now would be the time, if you'd like to come up front and be recorded on camera, that'd be even better, um, so anybody would like to speak. Alright, looks like no one, so we will move on. Alright.
Sorry, I thought I just turned that off.
Alright, moving on to consent items, uh, only one motion is needed to approve our consent items. And what we have for consent items is approving our bills for payment and the minutes of the July twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-one meeting.
Summer rec.
Motion is made by Bowlin.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bowen, any discussion or questions on anything?
I have two questions for Derek. Under the paper register, payment register. So on page twenty-three of twenty-five, Derek, do you have that?
No.
Okay. Anyway, under there, under summer rec, it's for transportation and it shows five thousand seven hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-one cents, jumpstart's two thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty cents, and gamma is two thousand nine hundred ninety-two. I just have a question, um, for summer rec, we do not, or we do or do not charge the parents anything for transportation?
Uh, summer rec, in general, they don't get transportation, it's just a baseball program within that that has a league that plays games, so they are not charged any additional for that bus.
Okay.
If their son or daughter's in baseball, or softball, which we rarely have enough to offer.
Okay, and then how many students were in that baseball for summer rec, roughly?
Um. The best I can give you is a guess, I, fifty kids, sixty kids, it.
Okay. And then, um, page seven of twenty-five, the hotel room to the state golf, how many students stayed down there?
Uh, we would've had six girls.
Eight.
Yeah, and the two boys, and then the coaches.
And how many nights did they stay down there?
Uh, they would've been there Monday, Tuesday night, the girls stayed Sunday, but their parents paid for that, they reimbursed for that hotel room because they had an early tee time for their practice room. I think they teed up at eight AM, so they would've had to leave here by, you know, five thirty in the morning or something, and the parents decided they would reimburse for that cost.
Okay, so did the girls bunk up in the rooms at all?
Uh, the, the policy is four room.
Four, so possibly two rooms for the girls?
Yes, plus a coach.
And a room. Okay. Well, I'm just questioning that because it came to fourteen hundred dollars for two nights, so I was just wondering like, where they stayed for one and what were the.
I mean, you had, we had state baseball there at that time and state golf. So I, I would guess it was crowded, they probably got what they could get. Um.
They all stayed in St. Cloud.
Yeah.
They didn't stay in, um, or Becker.
Becker.
Becker, so they had to travel from the hotel to the golf course.
So was golf and baseball?
No, the, the state golf tournament and the state baseball tournament for class A and double A were there, so there was sixteen baseball teams plus all the golfers staying in that area just for congestion. Um, so I'm sure we didn't get the first choice necessarily on hotel rooms, I mean, we had to kinda pick what we could get because when you have that number of teams and kids coming in, you don't get exactly what you'd like all the time.
Where did they stay, what hotel, you know?
Uh, not, I stayed in the same one, but I don't, I couldn't tell you what it was, so.
Did you stay at the Holiday Inn or not?
Was it a Holiday Inn, a restaurant that was out there?
Not at the Holiday Inn. Typically it's been, the main.
We were in the big Holiday Inn.
Oh yeah, typically it's been there, but, yeah, we're.
Yeah. No, it was out kinda by a truck stop, kind of a, on the edge of town, so it was easy to get there.
Okay.
And then hotel rooms for state track came to five seventy-nine, and how many students stayed for the state track?
Uh, we would've had two student rooms plus a coach room, coaches room for two nights.
Two students. Two, that's okay.
And there's actually, we actually ha- we allow another athlete to go with each of the athletes that's competing, just so they don't sit in a hotel room by themselves all night, so they have somebody to not sit and think about their state tournament performance the next day, but we don't pay any additional for that person, they're in a hotel room we were already getting.
Alright. Alright, any other questions? Hearing nothing else, we will vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries. Did you say nay?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Alright, uh, moving on, personnel, approve, approve administrative model is what I have.
Do we need a motion first to discuss?
Well, I think we should just discuss and then the motion needs to come on that, cause, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Someone make the motion.
Well, we, I, I'll just start, we had a finance committee meeting, um,
Did we just go forward?
Um, I thought it was a really good meeting, it was a long time. It was four hours.
It was good.
Um, but it was very good, Lindsay, um, I felt like we really, I felt like I had a much better understanding. Um, and this was kind of the main thing that we discussed, we also added John O'Neill to our committee, which I think is gonna be a real interesting. Um, and I, I would love to have two principals.
I think we should do that.
I would love to have two principals, and I, I think that Jim would like to have two principals, I,
I think we need to look at that.
But, can we afford that? And that's was kind of the main question, I feel like, my opinion is that if, if Jim and Brett and Derek, and this has been discussed and they feel like they can handle it, and Lindsay's telling us this is what she typically sees in a district our size, then I feel like we should go with that because it's gonna cost us about thirty, I think we figured about thirty or forty thousand more than what we spent on administration last year. So that's what I, but I agree with you because I think it would be awesome to have two principals.
I think.
I think it'd be awesome, and to also to kinda, that community I think was another kind of piece of that puzzle, so. I agree, I just, I just wanna make sure financial being responsible.
Where does that money come from, that extra thirty to forty, or what do we cut to?
Right, yeah, right, exactly.
You know, what programs do we lose? Which is not good for kids.
Well, it's not good for kids to not have those correct people in place either, I think, and I think if, we're all gonna talk about the kids, I think we need to look at the kids,
So.
and if we need to get the right people in those positions, then we need to do that, and we'll figure it out. We've figured out where we've gotten boiler money before and other things out of the general fund, I think we need to really look at this and take a good look and say, what is the best thing for our kids? And if that means having two principals again, I think that's what we need to do. Even, I mean, even Jim said he'd love to have that if he could.
Oh, yeah.
So, I think it's something we desperately, well.
If, if, if we could, and, but can we do it with, now that we have a full-time superintendent and a full-time principal, we didn't have that before, we had a half-time, a point six, um,
Superintendent.
Superintendents, and now we have a full-time superintendent.
Yep. Kind of a paying, more of the going rate of superintendents.
Yeah.
We're not paying, you know,
Mm-hmm.
fire sale prices, like, I, I don't know, I just don't even know what to say, but I mean, just in the past, we have not paid the position close to what it was supposed to be, so, um.
Well, my reasoning for, um, wanting to have that K through six and a seven through twelve principal, I'm just looking for the students in mind, as far as we have students that have really fallen behind during this whole COVID thing. And I truly feel that if you have a K through six principal and K through twelve, they, that's a one job item, they're looking at the one thing, their, their focus.
Focus.
Cause they're zeroed in on that job, on those students. And I truly feel instead of just trying to get the kids caught up, I think we should concentrate on getting them caught up and pushing them ahead of that even. And I think we need to, that's where our concentration has to be, is we might have to spend a little more, more money to get the right staff in there and start looking at beefing up our curriculum, so we're a standout above others, not a status quo, but above other school. I just truly feel that we have some hurting students, we don't know what's coming up this fall. And that person needs to be fo- laser focused in on those students.
Do you, uh, I'm, sorry, go ahead.
No, go, you can.
I was just talking about that, I was just wondering what the principal does to do that, what the principal's job is to move them faster than get them long.
Well, I don't know what the, um, principal's job is, but the principal has to be, he's definitely qualified because he works with those kids, I think he can, he's there as a, a liaison between the teachers and the students to help promote that, to help study that, to help look into that curriculum, to expand that, those opportunities for those students.
Mm-hmm.
Over and above what we could even think of, cause they're there every day. Where the dean of students, when it's coupled with community ed and AED, I, I just feel that for any one person to be good is like a jack of all trades but a, a master of none.
Master of none.
You, well, I'm truly, we're, we always say we're for the kids, this is our opportunity to really be for the kids. We need to get these kids caught up, they need us, we, I don't know that we can afford not to, to have a, have this, the two principals and our superintendent on board.
Well, I know Jamie had said before that, I mean, we had talked the last day that she said she didn't think Brett would be able to handle it.
That never said that.
If he did it by himself, yeah, you said that he would, he wouldn't wanna do it by himself.
No. No, I never said that.
Yeah, you, you did. Well, any, you, anyway, so, you know, we.
I might, I might have said that, I, Brett wouldn't be the K twelve.
I didn't say that.
But, but we were talking about the principals and, and realistically, it is a big job. And do we want to just throw him in there by himself, principal by himself, I mean, I get that she's looking at a dean of students, but to me, that's not enough. When the dean of students would have, like she says, too many places, too many other roads to travel, when you should have one focus. And I think we should figure out a way and just do it. If it's for the kids, if we're here for the kids and we really wanna do that, we wanna help Mr. Benson do what he needs to do, we wanna help Mr. Mittin do what he's gonna be doing,
But I, I agree.
let's get that third principal, or that principal in there, that second principal, that third person, and help the two of them do what they need to do.
But I agree with Jill, I mean, now you're gonna have these couple rooms, we want our curriculum to be above all, and we're not gonna be able to fiscally, financially do that if you're paying another principal, there's no way, we can financially do that, and, and we want.
There's, there's ways.
Sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, not that soon.
Or, okay, so, I just, a couple things, so I think we have a good administrative team here, and they have,
I think, I do too.
They feel like they, they feel like this is a feasible, um, model that they can work with, that stays within budget, and I, I just, before we say we're gonna have two principals, we have to figure out how we can afford it.
So that's my question, yeah, so that.
What, or we, so then, we're at a standstill again and we have the school year starting, so
Mm-hmm.
I guess I'm not willing to, and try to see who we can get as a principal at this point in the year, um.
I think too, I, I trust the people that are here in this building that if, if they feel like that they can do it, of, of course, would, you know, would I love to have ten more employees, probably twenty more right now, I'd love to. Um, I don't.
First of all, at this point, we would have to do it.
Um, we.
Failure would not be an option at this point.
Right.
Um.
One thing too, yet everybody in the building now.
What I, what I would like to see us do, we can, we could evaluate this at the end of the year and just say, hey, is, did this work, do we wanna continue this for next year? I, I, I'm not one to make a decision and then die on that decision, if it's not working, it's not working and we need to fix it. Uh, and I, I would be the first to say, I screwed up, I made, I thought we could do it, we can't handle it. Uh, and I wouldn't wait till the end of the year to say it, I, I would say it as soon as, as soon as I felt we weren't able to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Um. But I think we can.
And I think you, you think of promotions, right, like, I mean, think of, when you, when you have a job and you get that promotion, what does that do to your, to your work level, it's gonna make you bust foot harder, right, I mean, that's, most people that get promotion, they're gonna, they're gonna do everything in their power to make it work.
I guess the only thing I look at is that, this isn't the first time these three guys have heard this, I'm assuming you've discussed this, they think they can do it. I think they can do it. They would try if they didn't think they could do it, it's not my job as a professional to know what goes on in a school all day, every day, whether they can do or can't do their jobs, they're here every day, and they see the stuff that goes on here every day, and they think that they can make it go. And it would save the school district money, I think it's, I give them kudos for setting it up that way and saying, we're willing to do it, let's help the school out, plus, we think we can do the job, if they can't do the job, you'll say you can't do the job. And then we set up our model. But right now, I think this is what's gonna work, I think this is what we have to go with. If we're talking for the kids, we can't wait anymore. School starts.
Could you do this, could you put Mr. Benson in your, in the K through twelve, keep you where you're at, leave the dean of students, don't, don't pay the dean of students, cause we didn't pay Mr. Hendrickson for how long he did it, let's see how it goes first, cause the community ed, when you look at that, I'm worried, because that's gonna be too much for Derek to, to go off of, I mean, he's gonna be going here, here, here. If he's going three directions, not one of them is gonna be taken care of correctly. Right now, our community ed is falling behind, and then you put another thing on his plate, it's not gonna help the matters in that, or it's not gonna help that situation any better.
The, I would say we had, Melissa Segatol did the job for several years, I don't know how long she did that. Um, but, uh, uh, the, the other side of that too is with Brent, um, I just wanna make it clear what, what Brent's role was. When we brought the fifth and sixth grade up from the other building, so we still had two buildings, uh, I was starting to get hit with a whole lot of, a whole lot more disciplinary issues than, than I was ready for, that I was able to, to take on, and it wasn't an everyday thing, it was, but all of a sudden, one day you'd have, I hate to say it, real problems at the high school, but like, bigger problems, and then you had, this kid keeps looking at me in the cafeteria, problems coming up. And, uh, I, I, I needed help with that, and so we, we didn't pay anything, but we did put, uh, Brent Hendrickson down, he agreed to, to allow us to put dean of students by his name on the website, because if, if your kid had gotten in trouble and you didn't realize, you didn't recognize the name, and you went on the website and said, why is my kid getting in trouble by the special ed teacher? That would've been, that would've had just, had opened up a world of questions, so we decided, uh, we'll just name him Dean, and that takes care of that problem. So that's why we, that's why he was listed on the website as dean of students.
And at that point, you still had two principals.
But at that point, we still had two principals, one in each building, and, and he, Brent was able to do that because his job is about, just special ed evaluator, so he was, he didn't have a caseload of his own. He was simply, uh, taking new referrals and, and putting them through the evals or going through existing referrals. Every, every case needs to be reevaluated every year, so then he would, he would take on all of that, cause it's actually a lot of work. And that really freed up the special ed teachers so that they could focus on teaching and not have to focus on, you know, going in and observing this kid in this room and, and all of the, all of the eval side of it. It was, so that, and the reason that that, that freed up Brent was because he had, in a lot of cases, was writing things up, he wasn't tied by a bell schedule, where right now, he has, from this time to this time, these fifty minutes, he's with these kids. He was able to set aside what he was doing in most cases, come and work with these kids, and then go back to what he was doing.
How does that change this year then? That he might be able to still do that?
Well, we've got a, it worked because he was working with fifth and sixth grade. The, uh, uh, we would, he would not have time to be doing a, a full K, K six, uh, discipline regimen. It'd just be, it'd be, it's way too much, I couldn't do a K twelve discipline, I know Mr. Benson would not wanna do that. It's just too much work, don't you?
So, would you split up the dean of students to have someone do the elementary and someone do the high school?
I'm sorry, say that again?
I don't have no money. But.
I didn't hear the question.
Could you split up the dean of students to have one person do the elementary and one person do the high school?
Yeah. Yeah, again, it comes down to who can do it, we've got, we've got good candidates on staff, but the problem is, is that if you're, if you're tied by a schedule, uh, you, you're not gonna be able to get away and, and deal with an issue. Um, if you, and that, that takes away all teachers, it takes away, cause we don't have any part-time teachers, we're very lucky in that respect. It takes away, I mean, you wouldn't assign a secretary to it, but, I mean, they have, believe it or not, they're tied to a lot of bell schedules, just because of how they work. Paris can't do it because they're tied to bell schedules because of how they work. Uh, Cooks can't do it, about the only people that, that could do it would be custodial staff, and they're plenty busy. And I don't know that I'd have anybody that even wanna touch that.
So with that being said, then, you know, if we have, um, and since Derek is the one that's up for this position, if we have an AED and a community ed person, and they're time constrained too, because he's supposed to be doing his AED stuff and his community ed stuff, which I don't know what that all entails, and then he has to be dean of students, I look at it that this last year, even with our talented staff that we had during the COVID time, we had students still fall behind. We have students that still need to be caught up, even with the talented staff that we have. So instead of bogging down one K through, or seven through twelve principal, and we could have the K through six, and I'd be hard pressed to, define anybody in the community that wouldn't say, if the school can't afford it, that we couldn't go to the community and ask for help. Because I think they're gonna want these kids to be caught up, we, we cannot just try something to see if it works, just to, just to see and then have another year of falling back. We need to act now, we need somebody on board now that can laser focus in on these children
If we, if we wanted to do that, then we would wanna look at hiring a, a social worker to come in and directly work with those kids. Somebody that's trained on working with kids that are, that are at risk, that are, that are falling through the cracks.
So maybe if we do that, and instead of the dean of students, we get a social worker in?
Well, you, you still need some, you don't want your, you don't want your counselor or social worker being the disciplinarian, uh, because, as.
Kids won't go talk to them.
Yeah, kids, kids won't, kids won't, they don't wanna talk to the person that just put them in, in school suspension for a day.
Well, then I think we need to make the, I mean, if it, if it's that bad, we need to, that needs to be our teachers' responsibilities and parental responsibilities in getting their students up to where they need to be, like, I don't think that really has anything to do with the dean of students or a principal. I mean, yeah, it's giving them direction to do that, but I don't, um, my, that's just my, I mean, I don't think that that's.
Well, something, something isn't working here. Something is not working, because we have students that are falling, that are behind.
Every school.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But we need to take the bull by the horns and be proactive, instead of always reactive.
I think one thing that's gonna help is if our kids are in school this, in school this year, like physically in school, I think is going to help a ton, so.
Mr. Benson and I went to a data mine today and that's, that's something we noticed was our, our elementary kids that were in school all year long, their, their, their test scores were fine, their NCA scores were, were what, what we would've predicted. It's the kids that were learning from home, uh, that were here every other day, those are the kids that were, that were falling behind, and we bet, the data clearly demonstrates that.
That's gonna, I think that's gonna make a big difference.
Absolutely.
I just don't see, you know, he can do three jobs and do any one of them.
I just don't see, you know, he can do three jobs and do any one of them. I mean, good. He's already got an assistant. For the two jobs he's got, what's he gonna give him for the, if he gets this, another assistant?
No.
So would be paying for another person?
No, she's still doing the, everything that she would be doing. I don't, I don't see that adding.
I would like Mr. Flan really put his, um, time into figuring how we can balance that budget in the community ed. What we need to do there to, a lot of that has to do with the preschool program that we voted on. That, that's a big part of it standing.
I went back the last, how many years since he started? And the wage that he has calculated out for the last, I think it was five years or whatever, comes up to, close to where we're at. Cause the wage, am I, am I wrong? How many years have you been doing it? Five?
Five.
Five. And I calculated that backwards and you take that and calculate it and it comes up to about where we were before he became the head of community ed. That wage that got thrown on there is where we're at. Why we're backwards. And that little bit of twenty-five, extra twenty-five dollars or so that, that the membership of, uh, kids coming in there? I calculated that out, that's,
That's not the membership, I mean, it's more than twenty-five dollars.
Or not the membership, but yeah. But when we talked about that last year, about, and then, uh, how much we wanted to increase that? And it got shot down, cause that was one of them. You calculate out that difference that got shot down and that's peanuts compared to the other. And so it's really not,
I have to.
Cause I, I started taking ownership of that until I calculated it out. I went, well, that's really not that much, I guess.
I think it's actually been a couple of years now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
To my recollection.
This'll be the third.
Yeah, so it's been more than, so, just, just to make that. So, okay, where are we at? What are we, what are we gonna do?
I'll make a motion to approve the reduction of two principals to one K through twelve principal and dean of students.
Okay, motion's been made by Bowen.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Bowen. Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like to, well, no, go ahead, go ahead. I, I truly feel like, um, you know, we are running deficit spending right now and especially in our, um, community ed program. We either have to come up with something that has to bring in more revenues or we need to cut back on salaries. Something has to happen there. And I truly feel that it would be best if we had, um, Mr. Flan really concentrate on that this year to really make that so we can start whittling that down. And I know last year was hard because of COVID. We, there was a lot of things we couldn't do. But I would think that it would be to the school's benefit if he could come up with some really, um, awesome programs to implement in there so we can start bringing more revenues in. And so I feel that that would consume a lot more of his time. And he's, does a great job with, with athletic director. I would just feel like let's, let him do those two really well. And let's get someone that can do this elementary principal really well. And again, I can't stress enough how I feel that, whoever it is, I think we need to throw a, a job application out there and have our superintendent and our K, our principal that we have now fill in until that job is, until somebody, uh, applies for that job.
And I just wanna say that I'm, the way that I'm gonna vote tonight is based on the fact that I, I trust these guys when they tell me that they think they can do the job. When they, Jim says, if I, if I get to where I feel like I can't, I will let you know right away. We can reevaluate then. Also going back to Melissa Segal did do the job, did A D and dean of students at the same time for several years. And the fact that, and, it's community and in swimming, and the fact that Lindsay, um, sees a lot of this type of model in districts our size.
All right, anything else?
One thing Lindsay did point out though, that we are almost five hundred thousand in the red this year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and she said it isn't good. And yes, it might be happening in other districts, but that doesn't mean we have to follow other districts. We are individual, we're in an individual district and I think we need to start to change. And try to move forward and get out of debt that way.
Anything else? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries forward. Joy, will you do me a favor? Or Dean, will you, I turned the camera and now I'm, cause I lost Brian.
Trying to turn him down?
There you go, perfect. Oh, thank you. Thank you. All right, moving on. Uh, number two, approve the paraprofessional and food service staff for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. It's enclosure number one.
So I'll move Benson. Oh, wait, I gotta, wait a minute. So move Bookto.
Oh, okay, sorry. Sorry, I was like, what's going on? Um, motion is made by Bookto. I will second that. Any discussion or questions on anything? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay, or if you're going to abstain, now's your time.
Abstain.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, number three, approve the resignation of assistant dance team coach Melissa Hanzey effective August second of twenty twenty-one.
So I'll move Benson. I'll second Bookto.
Made by Benson, seconded by Bookto. Um, discussion, I'd definitely like to thank Melissa for all the, for all the years of the hard work and dedication she gave to the dance program. So thank you very much. Anything else? Hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number proof, number four, approve the resignation of Nicholas Steffel, assistant wrestling coach effective August eleventh of twenty twenty-one.
So I'll move Bowen.
Motion is made by Bowen.
Second Bookto.
Seconded by Bookto. Any discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number five, approve the, approve the resignation of Tristan Eastman, junior high wrestling coach effective August twelfth of twenty twenty-one.
So.
Motion is made by Bowen.
Second.
Seconded by Bowen. Any discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number six, approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fall sports coaches enclosure number two.
So move Bookto.
Motion is made by Bookto.
Second Bowen.
Seconded by Bowen. Any questions or discussion? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Number seven, approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fall co-curricular advisors enclosure number three.
So move Bookto.
Motion is made by Bookto.
Second Benson.
Seconded by Benson. Any question or discussion on anything? Hearing nothing, we will vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right, moving on to reports. First off, we have our superintendent's report.
All right. Well, I left my notebook in the other room, so I'm gonna, just gonna do all of this off the cuff. Um, with our workshops coming up starting next week, we've got new staff coming back on Monday. So they will be going through, meeting with Joy and, and secretaries, they get time with Neil and they learn how to use their email and computers and all that stuff. Uh, so that's Monday, new teachers, uh, right, all, all staff come back on Tuesday through Thursday. Uh, and we've got a, a good workshop program for them. We've got a top twenty that we're gonna be doing with all staff. And if any of you would like to, to come to listen to Tom Cody, uh, I talked about him at one of my interviews and, and, uh, he just, he does a great job of, it's not, it's not a program of how to be a better teacher. It's, it's how to be a better friend and, and coworker and, and husband or wife and all of that. Uh, it's all, it's all about relationships and he does a fantastic job with that.
Did you say when that was going to be?
So that is on Tuesday, starting right away at, at eight in the morning.
Okay.
Tuesday the thirty-first?
The thirty-first, yep. Yep, and we're looking at, uh, uh, doing some social emotional learning curriculum, uh, through them as well and, uh, Mr. Benson, if you wanna, nope, he's not a man of many words. So that's our, our workshops for next week. Uh, facility update, I met with, uh, Engen Associates and Barbara Marx last week just to, to get kind of their, their ideas of project planning and, and had a good meeting with them. Uh, and some good coffee and caramel rolls over at the Chatterbox. So, uh, it was fun getting some perspective. Uh, we're gonna have a meeting with some, a few citizens. It's not a facilities committee meeting, but a few citizens are gonna get together with, uh, uh, Pat Overham from I C S just to kinda, is this something we wanna continue with or do we set them aside and, and go another direction? Which is why I've been meeting with some other, other groups here. Um, and, uh, our, I put district audit update on there. I don't really have anything to tell you about it, but we had a bunch of accountants sit around here and do accounting things for a couple of days. I think three days they were here. So, uh, they'll, uh, put that together and then have our, I think typically December meeting or November meeting. November, we have, uh, uh, which used to be my least favorite thing to sit through and then as I get older, it gets more and more interesting. So, let's see, we talked to the, talked about the Pledge of Allegiance at the last meeting. Um, we're not only gonna do that here, but, uh, Mr. Benson's gonna be having people reading that at all grades. Um, and we'll, the requirement by the state is at the high school level to do it once a week. It, it works better on a daily basis, just in an elementary room because, because you have that grounding moment every day with elementary kids. Uh, but it is important and we all agree with that. So I did ask him to make sure that we are doing that, uh, at least once a week. And I think the student council.
We're gonna get student council involved in that.
Thank you. Uh, Margaret asked me to, we have a food service report, which is not quite a first, but almost. Margaret says, asked me to read this. She said on August fifth, the food service directors from nine schools put on a back-to-school boot camp, uh, training for the, all of the food service staff. Uh, the staff needs to have six to twelve hours of training each year, depending on what their position is. Uh, there's nine schools that take part in this, uh, A C G C, Bold, Benson, Morris, B L H S, G F W, McCray, uh, La Caparole Valley and, uh, Saint Mary's. So they all got together at A C G C this year. They were trained on knife skills, uh, food ser- safety. And then the A C G C fire department did a training on fire safety, first aid and EpiPen training. Uh, they got to learn how to use, uh, fire extinguishers. Um, if you've never had to use a fire extinguisher, it's, it's, a lot of people, they might grab it and then they, they see a fire and so they shoot at the top of the fire and they don't realize they're doing absolutely nothing. Uh, so it's, it's, it's good that they've gotten that. And, uh, they said it was a really good training. And then Erica from the M D E came out, did training on guidelines for the new school year. Uh, General Mills Chef, Chef Monica, uh, is she famous? She just wrote Chef Monica. Did some training on their breakfast products. There's a lot of work putting all of this together, but the food service directors feel it was well worth it for their staff to have hands-on training instead of sitting in a classroom for eight hours, uh, listening to a trainer. I know that with that required training, that's what they've had to do in the past. And I, I can think of some worse things than sitting for eight hours of food service training in a classroom, but, but not many. So, uh, I'm glad that they're able to get, do a lot of hands-on stuff here. So, so thank you, Margaret, for that. Uh, I was asked to mention the sign there. As of right now, uh, the class of seventy-seven still wants to, was it you that asked me? Class of seventy-seven still wants to move forward. Uh, so we, uh, contacted the city of Olivia to bring that one more time to their variance committee. And that's, that's where it's sad. I think, uh, last time I talked to them was at the, it was right around our last board meeting. So, um, they, they said that there was, they were having trouble getting everybody's on vacation and getting them all together. So, so I haven't heard anything in the last three or four weeks, uh, further on that. Any questions for you?
I'm still thinking about putting it over here in this corner.
Yeah, so when, when we set it up, we looked at a, a couple of ways that we could, uh, uh, aim it so that it's not aiming directly at any houses. And I, I, if they really wanted to do another option of, of putting it by the, the driveway, uh, I don't know, the entrance to the parking lot, uh, we could move it that way. Uh, but in the end, it's a sign and it does need to be visible. There's no point to spending fifty thousand dollars on a sign that, that you can only see if you're coming from, you know, this specific direction. So, uh, so we'll see how that goes.
Was there any thought of putting in that red plus corner?
No, because then we gotta go through all of that all over again.
Well, nobody goes that way. I feel like they all come down, you know, like people come for sporting, usually.
Yeah, I think that, that came up at the facilities meeting when we, when we met about that. And, and, you know, that used to be considered the front. And it just really isn't anymore. Um, so.
Is this, are you discussing this or is that?
That's, that's Mr. Benson. All right, thank you.
All right. Moving on to number two, K through twelve principals report within the package. Mr. Benson is here and that's the, that's the colorful one here.
Yeah, it'll get a lot worse as we get more months involved. Um, one thing I did put in there, cause as Mr. Mint was saying, we went to, uh, a data collection, uh, for M C As this year. They're not public knowledge yet. Uh, so we kinda got the, the inside gist of it. Um, but what I put together is our, excuse me, our M C A data from the past four years. And I, obviously we didn't have it last year or two years ago in twenty because COVID shut us completely down. Um, so there's no data for that, but we'll be having it for twenty twenty-one. And I'll update this chart for you guys so you guys can see it. Before I do that, uh, there's a lot of positive things on here. Uh, I've, I've got us compared to, um, the, the area schools. We've got R C W, B L H S in the state. Um, I've broken it down into elementary and high school. For, for some reason, how things align. Elementary can be K four, can be K six, high school can be seven twelve, five twelve. So there's no real alignment there. Um, but it shows our scores compared to the area scores. And then over on the right, um, of each of them, it's the state, that's the state average. So we're doing a lot of good things, but there's still some areas that we can improve on. Um, and that's kind of what you guys were talking about here, um, in the discussion. So I thought this was a perfect time to bring this to the, to you guys' attention. At the elementary school, we do the, the FAST data, uh, three times a year. So I'll let you guys see that data too. Um, throughout the year, that's a, a fall, winter, spring months, depend on what happens. Uh, we can get that. I can't get the, the data from the different schools. That's, it's not shared by the state. This is all stuff that you can find online. So that will be, uh, just for us to compare and see how we're doing. I guess any questions on the sheet that I just handed out?
Thank you. If anything, Paul.
Um, I wanna thank Denny and his crew. Uh, we've had a really busy summer in here. This hallway has been used from basically, when did the meeting get started?
June, uh, the second day of, the second weekday after school got done.
So June seventh until, or June eighth, roughly, basically for two months. He was able to clean the rest of the, the building and then he finally got to, we were able to get everything out of here between migrant program, community ed, jumpstart. So we're, we're finally ready to go here and teachers and staff have been in. So we're, we're finally ready to go here and teachers and staff have been in to get things ready for us to be ready to go, so. Big, big shout out to him.
I have a question for you. So for all the different grade levels and the students, we have a total of six hundred and sixteen students from K through twelve.
Yep.
Of the eleventh and twelfth graders, how many are going post-secondary of those numbers? Like eleventh grade, what would post-secondary be for those?
Full-time or part-time? Both?
Both.
There are seven full-time.
Okay, seven full-time.
In, in juniors?
In juniors.
Seven full-time, how about part-time?
I don't think there's any part-time juniors.
Yes, I think more high school junior or more of the seniors were part-time.
Okay, and that, so how many seniors are full-time and how many are part-time?
I can't, I don't know that off the top of my head, but I can get that to you.
Okay.
I can definitely get, I'll get you that tomorrow. I wanna say total was fifteen to twenty, total students, eleventh to twelfth grade.
So great.
And the full-time and low-end?
Yes. It might be, that might be shy by five or five, it's close. But I can get that to you tomorrow.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, number three, activities report, says this included in the packet, we don't have one, but Mr. Flynn is here.
Yeah, I've got a couple of things that I wanna just go through because there are a couple of bigger items. First of all, there, we're gonna look at a softball co-op with Buffalo Lake Hector Stewart. For the simple fact that we don't have enough girls to maintain a program in the next two to four years. We should have done this last year, but with COVID the year before, we didn't know what numbers were gonna be, we ended up having. I want, it was about fourteen or fifteen, nine twelve at the start of the year, that became about thirteen. And we only had two girls in junior high by the end of the year, I think we started with four. So we do have through some community programs, some more numbers coming up, but in the short run, this is something we kinda have to do. And we had a terrible situation last year where we ended up, we had a seventh grader, should have been a junior high level player that ended up kinda sitting on the bench in the varsity the whole year and there was just nowhere else for her to go. It was a, a really unfortunate situation. Now, we have co-op with BLHS before in areas where they didn't have a program and we did. Cross-country, they did, they weren't able to offer anything, we just said, you know, you can come here. BL, uh, dance has been the same thing, we actually had a couple of girls on the dance team, we've had a co-op for I think three years. And I think last year was the first time we got somebody to come out. They have a softball program, so do we. I visited with our conference at our meeting last week, their new activities director is gonna talk to their conference on the ninth of September. And we're going to try to start figuring it out from there. We'd have to figure out what conference we're gonna play in, one of us would have to cancel the schedule for this year because they're already done. We'd have to figure out a host site, coaching staff, there's a lot more when we both have a program at the start of the year that'll go into this. And with their AD being new, he's trying to get his feet under him in the position as well, so we're. We're gonna try to get this set up as quick as we can because it's just easier to do it now than right before the season starts and. I really don't know that we would have nine girls to put out there next year if we didn't do this. We graduated three of our, our older girls this year and we've had a couple that are not sure if they wanna come out. Based on the circumstances that, that they were put in last year, it wasn't a good situation. If we would have had a season in twenty twenty, we would have done this after that season, knowing what was gonna come out last year, we just didn't know what was gonna be there. So those negotiations, that does require board approval, once we get all of this figured out, so it will come back to you guys at some point. We just have to kind of try to get a plan together to bring you first. So yeah, is there any questions about that? This is the first time I've been through this kind of co-op, so I can do my best to answer them, but.
BLHS plays in Stewart, right? That's where they're.
Yes, yes, and that's one of the, that's one of the difficulties is our home field is in Olivia, theirs is in Stewart, they're on the opposite ends of the. And Hector's got a big sign that says help save me on the backstop there.
They do, and their field's awful, it's right beside my house, so yeah, it's awful.
A lot of which host site we went with would end up, what conference will accept us?
Sure.
I believe the Tomahawk, that they're in will, even with the two of us together, I know our conference would accept us. We're not bigger as a co-op than any of the schools in our conference, we're much bigger as a co-op than a lot of the schools in the Tomahawk, so I hope. It's an option to go either way, but it might be taken out of our hands at the Tomahawk conference meeting if they say, no, that's too big or we already have enough and they don't want that co-op in.
What happens with their coach, do we blend coaching staffs?
We, we would, the best option to me is to have some coaches from both programs.
And their coach lasts, so they, when they, they used to be where they were just JV, they didn't play varsity at all for probably three years. And that's how they played, because that's all, I mean, they wanna be able to, your younger girls to compete and they wanna be able to compete. So Gina Schellenberg was their coach for those three years, she quit and Mr. Powers came back and he's. I think he's almost, he wants, he's a great coach, but he's to that retirement age, but they do have some younger coaches too that would be.
And we haven't got to any of that yet, we've, we've kinda come to the agreement that it's best for both schools to put the two programs together. And then we decided, well, let's, he wanted to talk to his coach and I talked to my coach, that's kinda how we left it in June. And then now we're waiting on the conference meetings to see how the other schools would react. Before we try to figure out where, what direction we're gonna go. And then, and neither school, or our school certainly isn't married to the Olivia site. Sites would need work to play a varsity softball. But to try to move, you know, Hector or Red Island obviously makes the most sense because you're closer to the middle, you're closer to the other high school. It, it's just a matter of what's available, I'll be, I'll be up for negotiation, yeah.
Along those lines then, as far as like community ed, do you wanna explore that option with those guys too and, and talk about maybe combining ideas for community ed?
I've, I've discussed with Mr. Bransoy several times that I think combinations in community ed is not a bad thing. I've talked to Mr. Manton about this briefly, since he's taken over, that I, I honestly think that the long run, best solution would be if you put. The three schools along here together in one community ed program. But it's not up to me, you know, there's, there's two other school districts and my, my frustration in community ed is that a lot of the programs we try to offer. Most, we don't get the numbers we would need and if we raise the prices, that's not gonna help on numbers and that's the way you'd bring in more money in the budget.
Teresa, was your question about just working with them to, for offering things, is that what you meant or were you?
Well, well, I, I think we should, if you use your creative mind and maybe come up with a really awesome plan, maybe we could propose it to the other ones. No, I don't know what that would be, I, I don't have a vision in my head, but since you're the community ed guy and we are really hurting, maybe if. If you really concentrated on that and put up, came up with some great idea and bring it to the board, that'd be awesome.
We've, we've looked at offering co-op programs in the past, what Mr. Manton was asking about, we've done that with Hector and Redwood, I know, at times. I've never got beyond the superintendent's office with the idea of a bigger merger, I've brought it up. And with COVID over the last year, we've had a lot, you know, there wasn't really community ed going on at the time, it seemed like. A lower priority, I think, for Mr. Bransoy then, trying to get kids in the building and trying to make sure people were safe with that, so. It's certainly not outside the realm of possibilities. It's just, as I said, you, we'd have to come up with something to get everybody on board for it.
Is there a new AD, the community ed director too?
I don't know exactly his title, I know in RCW, they're separate, Derek, the AD over there teaches a couple hours a day, I think. They had an ADD in the students at Hector, he was not the community ed director, but I don't know what they put together with the position for, for Craig, who would be. But I, he was here watching the volleyball scrimmage yesterday, so I got to meet him and talk to him for a little bit, seems like we'll be able to work together on some things, so. Any other questions on that before I get to my next one? The second one I got is, and I think this was brought up with, in the facilities committee maybe, or a finances committee, but. Our, our track is getting to the point of dire need. Originally, I was under the impression that our track had not been resurfaced since it was created and I believe it was ninth, summer ninety-seven, because I was here at the time. Melissa Sagatow did, did kinda reach out to me and let me know that they did complete a resurfacing in two thousand nine. They started planning in oh seven and that didn't quite reach fruition, but it did get doubled back to in oh eight. And then that one was completed in the, the summer of oh nine, I believe. The, the surface of a track is, is usually twelve to fifteen years, so we are at about twelve years. And Coach Yonkey is here, Jen, do you have anything to add? You know a lot more about track surfaces than I do.
Um, I know Denny, two years ago, said that they did a lot of work underneath because of the washout. I mean, we live in Minnesota with the frost, it cracks, everything is, is starting to shift, but, so filling in the cracks with just tar doesn't work, you have to go underneath it more. Six hundred pounds of sand he put under that to try to get it filled in and then you put the tar on top of it to, to fill the cracks in already two years later, it's. I mean, it's starting to, to go bad again, but. It, it can be really detrimental to some of those kids' legs and their bodies and the amount of time that they put on that surface is, it's really hard on their young legs, so. Being able to have a nice facility and to me, we have a very successful team and we have nice facilities, we have good equipment and I wanna be able to provide a nice environment. That they can run and these kids can have a good meet at. Hosting more meets is always my goal, I know it's hard to set up and, and sometimes hard to man, but. Being able to have the parents come locally to watch the kids, family members, friends, being able to come here to watch. I think is super important for the kids, just to have them close, I mean, this is their home turf, they wanna show off what they can do when they're here and. If it's starting to deteriorate, starting to fall apart, I mean, yeah, we can train on it, but we're gonna get to the point where we're not, we're not gonna be able to host meets anymore. Some of the lanes are getting so bad, we pretty much have to weed whack the straightaway before football season from over the summer because the weeds start to grow up, so. I, I wanna see a good facility for the kids to be able to be successful on, not only for them and their buggies, but also so we can, we can have families and friends come and watch them, so they can show off their talents.
And we're, we're getting near the point where our inside lane is, is getting to be unusable. We can, we can run a, a meet with a seven lane track, but not a, not one that you're gonna get teams really looking to come to. We'd get whoever couldn't find anything else that day. In terms of cost, the last one we did in two thousand nine, based on the quote that I saw, and I don't have the final bill, but I think it came in at about eighty-four thousand, eighty-two, eighty-four thousand. Something like that, that was for a resurfacing. I would have to have somebody come out here to decide if they can resurface or if they have to grind it and relay it. Which obviously would be considerably more, but. I haven't been around tracks long enough to understand if, if you can continue to resurface and, and make that work or if you have to do more, so. I've talked to Denny about this, I've talked to a couple other schools and haven't got to the actual track people yet. I've talked to a couple of people who had projects that involve Dunix, but Dunix subcontracts the track, they're there to do a larger project and then they subcontract the track to somebody who specifically does that. So I would need to get through Dunix to whoever they subcontracted with, that kind of place to, to figure out exactly what it's gonna be and what it would cost. It's a cost that, you know, we're not looking for in this year's budget, obviously, because it's, it's something that would have to be planned for. But we're on year twelve this spring, if the lifespan is twelve to fifteen years, it's something we want to start preparing for, that this is gonna be coming, so. I will try to get more details on that, you know, throughout this year sometime, so that by the time you're budgeting for the future. You have a, a better estimate of what the numbers would be and what we have to do out there to make it, make it a sustainable thing into the future.
Thank you. Anything else here? Anything else?
No, with, with Dale not here, I figured I'd talk forever tonight.
Derek, when is tackle cancer?
Tackle cancer's our first game of the year, so it's the third of September. And thank you for asking, we've got, ACGC comes here for the first game of the year. We are gonna split our proceeds from that between the Tackle Cancer Foundation and Trevor Sol, whose cancer has come back and. With Coach Solomon and his wife living kind of on the edge of the two districts, we thought ACGC would be the right time to do that. The Tim Orth Foundation donated shirts, we're selling for twelve dollars a shirt and all the profits will go to those two. Yeah, and Hometown Bank is gonna do a pre-game meal and they're gonna donate the profits to that as well. September third.
And that's free low donation for their meal? I think I saw.
Yeah. I don't ever go to them, so I don't know.
Why? You act like you're busy. I can look, thank you, I just wanted to.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Number four, school board committee report, does anyone have anything they'd like to report on?
All I wanna say is, it was a very nice, like Tracy said earlier, finance committee meeting. It was enjoyable, we all, I mean, we all have things to input, Mr. Manton was very good, he was very willing to listen and, and hear us out and. We didn't all agree all the time, but we, we all got to say what we wanted to say and it was, it was nice, so thank you.
Yeah, no, I, I think we all agreed that it was a, it was a good meeting and we did, we learned a ton.
Yeah, got a lot of good information, yeah.
Yeah, we, we were lucky in that Lindsay was, because of the accountants here, she was staying at the hotel here and, and. So we kinda had her as a captive audience as long as, as long as we wanted, but, but she liked that too, she, she said it was good to be able to. Get us understanding more of what she's trying to do, so.
That's awesome.
Great.
And Mr. O'Neill stayed the entire time?
Yeah.
You think he scared Mark off?
I don't, I didn't know it was four hours.
That wasn't.
Pretty close to four hours.
But a lot of good information.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's good.
Really not having a feeling to get some.
That was good.
I'm not gonna be on that.
Just going to watch.
Yeah, yeah, yes. Alright, number five, pool board report, included, included in your packet and if you have any questions, as always, please contact Tracy. Sounds like they've had a busy summer, so. Alright, moving on to new business, number one is select a school board vice chair with the resignation of Melissa Sagatow, we don't have a vice chair. I was reading, we don't actually, by law, we don't actually have to have a vice chair, just Minnesota law, but we always had a vice chair. So, um, vice chair, basically, if the chair is gone, the vice chair would be the first, um. Person, if you feel comfortable leading a meeting, that's who I would go to ask. And the other thing that the vice chair does is we have a newly created executive committee that the vice chair sits on, so. I was just gonna, since it's just a four month, because of September, October, November, December, I was just gonna ask if anybody would volunteer to be the vice chair.
I don't hate Teresa.
Um, it's volunteer, because then we're gonna have time election.
Yeah, oh, well, it says action here, so I was thinking.
Yeah, no, but, but if somebody volunteered, then we could, you know, say. Teresa volunteers, so.
Teresa volunteers.
There you go, and.
I heard her.
I will, Sandy, that was a motion, something, and then that was a second by me, any discussion or questions?
That's just for four months?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we're reading everything in January.
Her eyes are like the size of tassers.
I'm sorry.
You'll be fine.
Are you okay? Okay, yeah, it's just, it's just, it's just carrying out this year and then in January, the first Monday in January, we, we, I'm sorry, that was, yeah.
She'll frighten you forever.
I know, like her eyes are like huge.
It hits forever.
No, it's just four, it's just the the last part of the year.
You've done it before, yeah. Yep, fine.
You'll be fine.
And I'm not planning on being gone, so I mean, that, take that stress off of that, so, um, not planning on it anyway, but. Any discussion? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. All right. Moving on, number two, discuss the memorandum of understanding between the board school and chalkboard collective community. Uh, it's discussion, it's inclusion number four.
All right, I can introduce this a little bit. I emailed this to all of you, I think July twenty seventh, I was about. Um, and I received this from Suzie Peterson, and basically, I think it's really important to note on the the acknowledgement on the very last page, the signing of this memorandum does not constitute a formal undertaking, and as such, simply intends that the signatories shall strive to reach, to the best of their abilities, the goals and objectives stated in this MOU. So it's not a legally binding thing, but it's it's a promise, so it should be binding. Uh, so I I think we need to look at this, and if there's anything anybody would like to add or change, because we don't want to have to the only, does anybody have anything they thought that they'd like to see on here?
I guess the one thing I saw was the one million dollar demolition fee, going to, um, uh, that part of the bond going to help with, uh, preparing the building or knocking down the building part that they have. Um, when you're in a a three school situation or three town situation, um, would you have to look to give a million dollars to each town to take care of whatever issues happen to their schools? Or do you just stay, I'm not saying one way or the other, I'm just saying.
Yeah, if I remember correctly, uh, when they were putting the 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 project together last year, don't quote me on this paper, don't quote me, uh, but if I remember correctly, that they they part of the project needs to be demolition of of the building, so, uh, I I don't think that that would mean that we also have to give money to to other towns.
That's fine, I just make a chart.
And that was like six hundred thousand, huh?
I had, yeah, I had a question like two, because I thought that when we, maybe I don't remember, I thought that we couldn't allocate those funds.
You couldn't, I think the problem was is that we were looking at allocating them to making improvements before we got rid of the building. I think that was the problem.
So as long as it is used for demolition purposes, then we can allocate those.
I believe that is true, yes.
Because that building was not going to be used for educational purposes, like running the school in there anymore, so.
I think there's like a certain amount that has to go to an abatement, they call it.
Okay.
Where the abate, that portion goes to the abatement, which means to clean out the spes- or anything like that that might be in the school, that has to go for that, we have to do that. I think, if I remember, don't quote me on that, but I I do believe that's what it was.
I think they tried to give like three million, and they said, no.
Yeah, there's a, there was a, there's a reason we couldn't do it, so I think that probably needs to be looked into, because if we, I mean, the demolition, what we had for a quote was six hundred thousand dollars, and that's all we could, we could say, okay, here's six hundred, but this is what it had to go to. I'm pretty sure that's how it went. And I didn't even think we could even do that, like, I thought we had to do demolition. Right, like, we couldn't even just give them that money to do this. So I think we should probably look into that. I, that was, I should have brought that up to you too, because that was one of my questions.
Yeah, oh, that's fine.
Has has Kevin Ruff looked at this at all?
No.
That that would be something that would be helpful, or I I know it.
I just hate spending the money.
I know, but I don't wanna get.
How much, how many hours of work is this at?
I know, I know, I just.
Three hundred and fifty dollars a month.
We also have to make sure.
But I, when I, yeah, and I, even ask Ryan, because Ryan's the one who said we, he looked into that part of it too, so maybe we can ask both of them.
I, I, I can.
There could be a question for Pat if he's coming to me with the proposal anyways.
I can ask Pat tomorrow.
Go home, or you spend the money on the attorney, which I understand.
Start with Pat.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd like to see a couple of things, um, changed on here. On phase one, if you go down to where the board will continue to minimize ownership, I I would like to see board will continue ownership and maintenance expense focusing on mitigating, preventing any further structural damage caused by, and I don't, the reason why to get rid of minimize ownership is I think we need to keep all our options open, um, even though the the three story needs to come down, there's no doubt about that. And, um, east wing too, according to Ingen Associates. But I think we need to keep our door open to all, uh, possibilities of if pay through, if the, um, elementary goes back over to Bird Island, and we do a major remodel here and have a high school here, just like they wanted for the steering committee, they wanted to keep the elementary in Bird Island, and I think we should just have that option open instead of closing the door completely on that.
I'm the first one to say, we don't ever wanna write yourself out of options, so I I don't have any problem.
I think financially, we can't afford it, isn't that?
Well, if you lose that, if you lose that three story though, how many elementary classes are gonna go there?
Well.
But the, but I, but I think we're getting caught up in the details.
I just, anyway, but, yes, we are, we are.
Right, we're not above it.
All we're saying is, we're, continue ownership, we just get rid of minimize.
Yeah. Yeah, get rid of minimize.
I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah.
The only thought I've had is, do we wanna have something in there if somebody were to stop over tomorrow and say, hey, I'd like to buy that and put a whatever, do improve it somehow? This isn't a guarantee. Because we could, we could end up owning it for another year or two, and and then nothing happens with it. If somebody showed up tomorrow and said, hey, we want this property, we want to improve it, that's gonna benefit Bird Island, it's gonna benefit us. Should we look at including some language in there?
Have the opportunity to sell, yep.
If, yeah, and and we could even say, we'll give you the a right of first refusal, or I don't, I don't foresee anyone coming and offering large sum of money. But I I don't think we, again, we're, we want, we want that ability to say, okay, these people are coming to the table and they want to do this. Especially because, like I say, anything that happens there is going to benefit that community.
That's a great idea, the only thing is, we don't even have a plan, what we're doing yet, and until we have a plan as far as, you know, either eliminating an area, I I feel we need to keep that door open. I don't know that we can go ahead and sell it, because that's a gymnasium, that's a big area that we're, our school is still using. And if we were to sell it, what would we do? We have no place for that, we have no other gym. So I think we're kind of caught between a rock and a hard spot.
I think you could still have that language in there, though.
If we're in ours, because then you make the decision based on who would potentially belong.
Yeah, I, I, I think whatever we. Yeah, whatever we do, we would need to have a a a use agreement for that facility. I don't, I don't think we would change that, um.
Could I think that's kind of where it's at right now, or, you know, with the, um, chalkboard collective?
Because we're not really saying we're going to.
We still, no.
Sell it or do anything.
Yeah, we're just keeping that option.
But we're just gonna, we're agreeing to maintain it, thanks, is that?
Yeah, um.
You're just saying to have the option if somebody would come up and say, we're ready now.
Yeah.
And the money it would save your school district to not have to
Yep.
deal with the rest of it, just to have that language in there that if somebody else
Yeah.
lets you know that you don't have so much time to decide what you want to do.
I assume that's zone residential.
I have no idea.
I would assume.
I don't know what the, what the something is there.
Uh, somebody out there has to, you know.
Mark's back there, listening, I would say a resident.
Yeah, yeah.
Mark, you suspect?
I just, I I think if anything happened there, it would, it would be beneficial to Bird Island, so, uh, I don't know why we wouldn't have that on there.
I don't think that hurts.
And again, this, it's not lea- we're not legally bound by this, but if we're gonna make a promise, I don't wanna.
Anything else?
You're just gonna have it like that, like more people in this.
So I'm gonna have it looked at, yeah, we're not gonna have a motion on this.
Right, it's just discussion.
This is all just discussion, yeah.
Do you have any further thoughts? Mr. Minton, no.
And do you, do you want me to, I'm not a viable attorney?
I think Hope talked to, Hope talked to her first.
Yeah, talk to her first, right.
I, I just think it's.
No, honey, I get it, I understand, I just it's not.
It's not legal binding, something that says.
Yes, so, that's, I just don't want.
Yeah, right, but it, I, like I, I said, yeah, it says that on the back, but, I mean, if we're gonna
It's not a formal.
Do it right.
We should at least try to make
Yeah, I agree.
Keep all the doors open and make it as, 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 uh, usable as we can.
All right, moving on to number three, approve the Head Start catering agreement for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two school year. So both, the motions made by Bookill.
Seconded by me.
Seconded by Bo Leeb. Any discussion or questions?
I have a question. So are we not, we're not serving them here as a food catering service that's coming in to feed Head Start? Oh, it's, we're not.
We're catering for that, right?
We are the catering service, yeah.
Okay, so that makes my question of, um, under health sanitation, B and C. Is there a reason why, um, we're responsible for providing disposal paper products and plates and bowls and napkins? Is there a reason why we just don't use the dishes in the cafeteria, why do we have to buy all those paper products?
That's kind of interesting.
Where, where are you at?
Under health sanitation, number three, be in the state.
Health sanitation should be in the state.
I, oh, it's starting to, uh.
Yep, include your side.
Okay, okay.
And then go down to the health and sanitation, B and C. So it, it says.
Another good question to maybe ask, maybe Margaret ahead of time, I don't know, do you know that?
Yeah.
I. I don't believe that this re- this obligates us to provide them every day if we're not using, but if we, uh, if the, uh, every now and then the dishwasher breaks, and so this, I believe this says that if the dishwasher breaks, or for whatever reason, all of our trays break, we are responsible for providing the paper products to them.
Okay, they can't do this off the floor? Just kidding. Um, how many children are there in that program, just these things?
Six, forty, sixty.
That's a start.
And Head Start, eighteen and eighteen.
Oh, cool, well, I guess I was way out. I'm really bad at estimating.
Okay, so do we cater it to their classroom, or do they go down to the lunchroom?
Bring it down here.
Oh, they do, okay, how come they just don't go down there?
There isn't room, and we don't have time for them to be in there.
Yeah, and they'll make, they'll spill everything on their way back.
And then the big kids will have to look it up.
Then they have to.
All right, any other questions?
Do we get, oh, yeah, I think that one, do we get any special funding for this, for the food service for this?
There's all kinds of funding, I don't know what, uh, if we get something.
Head Start pays to be here.
They pay us for the space, yeah.
Right, yeah, right, and they're paying for their catering, so.
So I guess we're.
So there's no state funding, there's probably no state funding then?
That's the.
I think Head Start gets state funding, and they pay us with, for the food services.
Right, so, not like one's paying out for this, so. All right, anything else? All right, hearing nothing else, we will vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
Number four, discuss the request to purchase land for a splash pad in Bird Island. This is just a discussion item.
I, Theresa, I'd ask Theresa to kind of talk about that, because she's part of the facilities committee, and I just asked her to wait until this time to talk about that meeting, and whatever you'd like to.
Whatever you'd be possible.
Cory either approached the facility committee and asked to purchase, um, an area that includes the old tennis courts and a little bit more, so they could do a splash pad, we're looking for a grant to do a splash pads slash pickleball courts over there. And, um, she, what, at first she thought we'd have to make a decision right away, but
Yeah.
it's not like it's, she can still apply for the grants without having to have a purchase agreement or whatever.
Yeah. Yeah, we were worried we had to have it done like ASAP, but we don't now.
So then it was visited at the time that, since the school district, um, left the tennis courts dwindle, that it would be a nice gesture, um, for the community if the school board would, or if the school would take care of the disposal of the tennis court, so they could start with the clean surface instead of down by having to pay to have it cleaned up, because it's a, it's gonna cost some money just to get rid of that. And then it was also.
And what are we gonna sell it, the land for?
Um, Mr. Minton brought this up, and I agree with him, I I thought we could just sell it for a dollar.
So if we're gonna sell it for a dollar, then I think that they can dispose of it. That's my opinion.
They can pay for the disposal.
We can get land for, look, need quickly now.
In the grant, can't they put that in there, in the grant, that they would, um, demolition that portion of it, put it in the grant? I assume so.
Usually, usually when you write the grant, you can write it for whatever, oh, I would.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the, I don't know anything about their grants.
I'm not sure.
There's actually a couple of grants that they're looking at.
I would see if they could put that demolition of that in the grant funds.
Yeah.
Cause I'm sure that's prob- I don't know what.
And it's just a discussion here too, so we're not looking for action.
Yeah, and, and usually they can actually put in the cost of land if we so wanted to just say we're gonna, you know,
Right.
offer to them for a discount or whatever, that, um, they can actually put that land cost in there too, which, that money is street from the government, why wouldn't we use it instead of giving it? I don't know, that's my thoughts. I mean, if they can't, then we can work with it, but if if they can put it all in that grant, why would you not?
I'm assuming it has to start with my grant too, and you do everything from start to finish, of what, I mean, down to the penny of whatever.
What do you think, Teresa?
I hear either.
Yeah, I mean, I guess if they can put it in the grant, um, I I have no problem selling them the land for a dollar, it's a pretty small horse level.
If we can, and I I don't think this is a problem, because they don't want, they don't want half of it, they want about a sixth of it.
But they could down it in the grant.
And, uh, so we would retain access to the road, so that actually makes makes everything easier, because now we don't have to have a legal description of an easement, so.
Yeah, that's good.
And is it something that will be in action item then?
At some point we would, but, uh, uh, the, there's no, there's no hurry at this point, so we can save this for the next meeting. The, uh, if we're doing it for a dollar, we can just do a quick claim deed, uh, and and it's pretty simple with, we, we don't have to do a lot of the, a lot of the things that you would have to if you're selling a house or or a larger piece of property. And, uh, and something that a number of people have asked, and I I verified with our attorney, is that since, if if we did need to to get a realtor or something, we don't, we don't need anybody to to bid on anything, we don't need anyone to bid on the land, um, because this does not fall into that, that area of law.
All right, anything else? Some more information to come.
More to come.
Yep.
Uh, number five, set public hearing dates for proposed property taxes payable twenty twenty two. So, this is an annual item, um, so the recommendation is our hearing date would be Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty two. The continuation hearing date, if needed, is Monday, December twentieth, twenty twenty. Uh, location is here in the District Office of Olivia and six thirty at both times. Um, so then the timeline is as follows, the honor by September thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Certify in truth and taxes and continuation hearing dates to county auditor, September twentieth, twenty twenty one. Adopt a proposed twenty one payable twenty two levy, honor before September thirtieth, I'm not really sure when I'm reading all of this, but yeah, keep going, because I started. Certified proposed twenty one payable twenty two levy to county auditor, December sixth, twenty twenty one, at six thirty is the hold, hold the public hearing. And December twentieth, twenty twenty one, and six thirty is continuation of hearing if necessary. And December twentieth of twenty twenty one is our regular. And December twentieth of twenty twenty-one is our regular board meeting. Um, adopt the final twenty-one payable twenty-two levy, honor by December twenty-eighth, both of these things will happen. Certify final twenty-one payable twenty-two levy to county auditor and notify the Department of Education of final certified levy. So that's, I mean, it, it's same dates as the dates last year, it's just a little bit ahead of your.
Yeah.
Exact same dates, but correlate to where we were last year, so.
Who decides on the amounts? I'm not, I, I know nothing about that, so I'd like to look, a little more information.
Um.
We get the numbers from the, from the state and then Lindsay puts it into a, an Excel sheet.
We, this is not a school board thing to figure out, so.
Okay, the state basically determines what you're gonna get.
Yeah. Right.
Alright.
So.
We'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you. Bookill has made the motion, I will second that. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye, and aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
Number six, s- set salaries for licensed and non-licensed substitute for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, non-certified subs, so the pair, paraprofessionals, specialized education professionals, food service, students, they're all part of their, um, perspective agreements. Um, student help is minimum wage level and certified subs, so for teachers are a hundred and twenty-five dollars a day.
Seconded.
Motion is made by Bowen.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bowen. Any questions or discussion?
Are the certified subs, is that the same as it has been or is that an up or down? Is this saving?
We, we increased it, I think about three years ago.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while.
It was, I think, one or five maybe?
Yeah.
One or ten?
One or ten?
Isn't that pretty much what it is down the corridor then for?
Yeah, yeah, for our, for our, our size of, of district, um, we, we wanted to increase it, hoping that we'd get a few more people taking it. I don't, I don't think we have any more people settling than we did before.
Alright, any other questions? Hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye, and aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
Um, number seven, approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fundraising activities enclosure number six, so they know Mr. Flan had sent us an email and.
Yeah.
Yes, additions.
Yeah, well, I, I got an email today, um, from somebody on the dance boosters and I thought I'll just try to slide these on rather than reapprove a new set next, next month. The dance boosters would like to be added to the split the pop one, that they would do at their home dance competition. And then they have a few others that, uh, three others that they would like to add down at the bottom, so these would all be under dance boosters. There would be a build a burger on October first, be a football tailgate meal. A purse slash basket bingo night at Max's with the date to be determined. And like the volleyball team does, they're gonna do a competition program and they're gonna sell ad spaces for their home competition with some local businesses. So that one would be, um, November, December. And all of this would go to uniforms and, and equipment, come on. And I, I'm not gonna pass the buck, say any name, I sent this out in June, I got this today at three o'clock. I just wanted to get it on here, cause otherwise it would've come back up next meeting and if we're doing them all at once, it just seems easier.
Alright, so with that, um, we're looking for a motion to approve.
Make a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion is made by Jacob, seconded by Bowen. Any questions or discussion? Alright, hearing nothing, we will vote, all in favor say aye, and aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries.
Aye.
Alright, um, now we are in the second readings, we have second readings of five different policies. So, second reading of policy one oh two, equal educational opportunity, it's enclosure number seven. Number nine, second reading of policy four oh one, equal employment opportunity enclosure, closure number eight. Number ten is second reading of policy four oh two, disability nondiscrimination policy, enclosure number nine. Eleven is second reading of policy five thirty-two, use of peace officers and crisis teams to remove students with IEPs from school grounds, enclosure number ten. And twelve is second reading of policy seven thirteen, student activity accounting, closure number eleven. Now, with reading all of those together, does anyone have any questions on any of those specifically, in all, any of your reading? Yes, which one?
I do.
Go.
The student activity accounting one.
Okay.
The curricular and co-curricular activities, what like example of that would be? What, so extracurricular activities is like wrestling, football, volleyball, what's the curricular and co-curricular activities?
So curricular is part of a class, and co-curricular would be outside of a class, but related to the class. Derek, do you have a better way of saying what I just said?
No, uh, an example like math league is a co-curricular.
Okay.
But a cons- a performance, a concert that they're paid for here to be here for extra time is a curricular activity. Cause it's part, the kids have to show up for class, it's a graded activity, yeah, a band or choir concert, it's, it's graded, so that's co- that's curricular.
Or like, yeah, yeah, and required, right.
Alright. So I, I guess I have a question about that too, if someone's went back there or right away. Um, so on, under definitions about the co-curricular activity, it says, um, co-curricular activities are not offered for school credit and cannot be counted toward graduation. And they said that they are conducted during, at regular and uniform times during school. So my question is, is if they can't get school credit for it and they can't, it's not counted towards graduation, are we paying staff to do this? And why are we doing that then? So, what would be the purpose?
Like I said, math league, um, providing opportunities for kids.
But math league does not go to school credit?
Right.
It's, it's a volunteer, you go off a team.
It's extra.
Yeah, just here doing extra.
Kids who really like math, wanna.
Oh yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying no, I'm just, that's why I was just asking.
And you might challenge.
Or if you started a student council, uh, s- student council might meet during the day. They don't typically, but they could, they could have meetings during the day and, but you couldn't, we can't give you graduation credit for being part of student council.
Looks good on us, doesn't it?
Does look good, they're good.
Yeah, no, I, I, I just wanted that explained, yeah, I'm all for math.
Yep. I, I had to look it up, not too.
It's just like, just like vice chair of the school board, let's go. Alright, what other?
So then on the, the very first one, like the equal educational opportunity, are these, um, policies, are they coming from M, is this from MSBA?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the, all the stuff down here.
So, okay, my only question is that, like, under the general statement, um, the policy of the school board is to, um, provide equal educational opportunities stuff, is there a reason why we have to get in detail about, you know, it, it goes through all of them for, um, the school district does not unlawfully discriminate on the basis of race, color, creed, religion, natural religion, sex, marital status, parental status, status with regard to public assistance, disability, sexual orientation, including gender identity and expression, or age. Is there a reason why we have to be so specific about the sex part? I mean, we're not getting into detail about religions, race or color, I mean, it is, we are not gonna discriminate, we love all people.
I'm guessing it's a legal thing, guessing it's just.
Yeah, they have lawyers courting over this stuff, so.
Yeah. It's gotta be some precedent to it or else I don't think they would have to go in that much detail. And just my.
Well, yeah, we, we actually did, I went to a class when we went to school board convention and it was very like laid out, kind of the.
And we can make changes to model policies, but if we did, I'd wanna make sure we ran it through a, an attorney first.
Yeah, sorry. Alright, any other ones?
Okay.
Okay.
So are we doing all this in there?
Well, it's just second reading, so we're not approving anything, so that's why I'm gonna.
Oh, okay, oh, okay, okay.
Nope, I'm good, okay. I, I know, I just figured if they were. Doing a little bit, saving time. Um, alright, moving on to upcoming dates, uh, September tw- twentieth, this is a change. September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, seven PM school board meeting, district office, this is the third week of September um, versus the fourth week because Mr. Minton has a, um, conflict on the twenty-seventh.
I do.
And we wanted to keep it on a Monday, you know, because we talked about like moving into a different and just, it's really hard to find another state that works better than Monday, so.
And, and so, you know, I, and I think I included that in an update, but, to you, but it's a, on Sunday, I'm gonna go all day Sunday in Duluth, it's a, a conference for new superintendents and then it's the state conference, uh, following that Monday and Tuesday, so I'm not just going to like, somebody's birthday party or something.
Oh, yeah, sorry, I mean, it becomes a little.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I thought, oh, this sounds.
Although you're going to Duluth, I might send you some stuff.
I dislike Duluth immensely.
Anyway.
Yeah, I would bring some.
Yeah, just, so I'm raising awareness that, that we're not trying to change the schedule here and just trying to make sure we have our key players here for the meeting, so. Um, alright, moving on, please change of calendars to September twentieth. Uh, adopt a resolution for acceptance of gifts, grants and requests, and, so we have a resolution for that. So, member.
Benson.
Benson. Introduced the following resolution, moved its adoption, whereas anonymous donor has generously donated three hundred and forty dollars towards the twenty twenty-one summer meal program. Therefore be a result by the old school board to gratefully accept these gifts. Motion for the adoption, the following resolution is duly seconded by member of Bookill. And upon a vote being taken there on the following voted in favor thereof, and it's a roll call vote, so, um, Sandy?
Aye.
Teresa?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
And I myself, I am an aye. Um, the following resolution was approved this twenty-third day of, day of August, twenty twenty-one, thank you to the anonymous donor. And with that, our business for the evening is finished, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn if someone would second that.
Will second.
Thank you very much, Sandy, and all in favor say aye, and aye, and opposed say nay. Motion carries, two forty-two, thank you all very much.
Aye.
Justice.